Very good. Let's call this meeting to order and please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Green, LaFleur.
Here.
Nistrovich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Yarck.
Here.
Okay, we need a motion to excuse Jamie from tonight's meeting due to illness?
So moved. Support?
Is there any discussion? Hope she feels better. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes for the City Council meeting of July 6th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the City Council on anything that's not on our agenda tonight, we simply ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anybody would like to address council? We will bring it back to the table. Is there a motion for the agenda? Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
I have no changes.
City Council, any changes to the agenda? No? A motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
So moved. Support?
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Be not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Most been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have three this evening. The first one being consideration of repairs to Fire Department Water 1, which is the tanker. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider approving repairs to the Fire Department's tanker truck, which is currently out of service. On Monday, July 13th, during truck checks, they had some issues with it and called in Michigan Fire Apparatus to come and take a look. Initial reports are that it's the transfer kit and several other repairs that will be, need to take place due to that. The estimate currently is $35,950. The fire chief is here tonight to also talk about this, but initial recommendations from the Fire Department and from administration are to go ahead and authorize these repairs. The cost of a similar truck will be a lot of money. Currently, we have $40,000 that would've been transferred into our equipment acquisition fund this year since we had paid off TIF on the engine loan last year. So what we would be able to do is tap that $40,000 and then have roughly $4,000 left to transfer into that fund, assuming these repairs come in as estimated. They have not torn into it yet until we get the approval tonight. And there's also a chance that by changing from a two-stage pump to a one-stage pump, we may save some money.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
Move to approve the estimate from Michigan Fire Apparatus in the amount of $34,950.
Support? Most been made and supported. Discussion?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
I would really be curious to know why the transfer case went out. You know, when they tear it apart, you should be able to see what transpired there. And the other thing, as I was thinking today, is the state still regulating us to go out there and just crank that thing up and pump like they did in the past? You know, that we never have to do, you know, you don't do it at a fire, but you have to go out there and test the pump for the state, right?
Pump testers still, yeah, still required. It goes through a pump test once a year and it's run up.
They scream it.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, I believe they run up to 200 PSI, I believe.
We didn't just do that, did we? Did that lead to this, or?
We don't, I don't believe so. We just did, actually, we just had the, actually, we just had the truck out for its yearly service on basically June 11th. So that, it was out. I have the repair bill here, or you know, basically the service here with me. Right now, until Michigan Fire Apparatus, I've talked to John Zeitz, and he really doesn't know what caused it to fail at this point until he starts tearing into it. Don't know if we'll determine for sure what did, but that's gonna be our best chance to figure out what failed in it. So that's pretty much where we're at at this point. Again, we took it out for training on Monday last week, and on returning, we felt a vibration. Got it back in a haul, crawled underneath it, and this is what we found. So that's pretty much where we're at.
Could we be doing kind of exploratory when we send it over there? And if we find out we have something else major besides this? I mean, this is major, but it's minor in the whole scheme of a new truck. But if there's a concern, sounds like Jimmy's got one, he's got a lot of experience in this. Do we just go ahead and say, replace the transfer case? I mean, do we have a rapport with this repair company that they're gonna say, well, wait a minute, there's more to this than just?
Yeah, John has done other repairs to the vehicles. He's actually repaired that one and actually was just, just replaced a relief valve and everything in it before the yearly maintenance. We'd had some trouble at a fire where we were having trouble with the relief valve in it, and we had to do some repairs at that point and had those done. And at that point, everything was, appeared to be fine.
Can I correct you if I'm wrong? They're actually coming here to do the repairs?
Yeah, they're gonna do it in our haul.
In our haul, so you'll be able to kind of see and watch and talk to them as they do it.
So, yeah. So everything, it's, right now, we've moved it a little bit, but it's, you know, it's not something, obviously, you could put on the road or anything. I mean, we just pulled it forward to get the old truck out, and that was about it. We don't wanna move it or drive it at all. It's, it's, you know, like you say, it's pretty much sitting on the winter covers and stuff that, where everything's falling down and basically transfer case and the pump are the one right on top of the other. So that's why they both need to be repaired or replaced.
What's the difference between a two-stage and a single-stage?
Two-stage and a single-stage. Basically, with the two-stage, it gives you your volume or pressure. And we've had some issues with, again, the relief valve, switching that back and forth. And so we're thinking, and when we bought our new engine, we went to a single-stage to try and reduce those repairs and those problems. So we're thinking going to a single-stage on the tanker will also maybe eliminate some of those problems down the road and also be a little bit cheaper on the repairs.
Okay.
It also sounds like some of these things are obsolete, some of the parts.
Yeah, the, well, it's like you can't just buy parts, so you gotta buy the whole pump. And also, they kind of changed the design a little bit, so he's also gotta go in and shorten the driveshaft in a little bit.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
So that's part of, also part of the cost and part of the repairs that he has to do to it.
Yeah, with being in 1992, those people getting close to 25 years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Just go ahead.
As Counselor Schultz was bringing up, I would be interested in hearing back what they find in, you know, as far as if they found a potential source.
Well, yeah, I would, obviously, that's our main concern, too, is we wanna, you know, we wanna try and figure out what caused it to fail, no matter what it is. So obviously, we don't repeat it, you know, if it's something that we did as a department or whether it's something that, you know, got missed in the maintenance or something that didn't happen in the maintenance. I mean, obviously, we would wanna know also, so we don't have a repeat issue.
Yeah. In other words, this isn't something that's normal?
No, no, no.
Not normal wear and tear after 25 years?
No.
Okay.
No, it shouldn't, no, you might have some failures, but not to this, you know, this degree.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Is there any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion passes. Good luck. Item number two is consideration of M-A-B-A-S mutual aid agreement. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider approving the Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Agreement, otherwise known as MABUS. MABUS is a mutual aid agreement system that pre-designates resources to respond to different levels of emergencies. These emergencies can span local, county, and state boundaries and also incorporate many of the special resources provided by the fire services. For normal fires and fire department responses, we would still use our local mutual aid agreements with Memphis and Armada, St. Clair. However, if there's a large-scale event or something that we need resources beyond those areas, this MABUS agreement would allow for that. It also does set up some cost structures and liability. But for a large-scale event, we would need this in place to help facilitate getting those resources here in a timely manner. I have had the city attorney, Rex Burgess, review it, and he's comfortable with the agreement. Also, I believe almost all departments in Macomb County are now part of this and have all signed on. It's kind of a thing that a lot of communities in Michigan are agreeing to. So with that, to the other members of council.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
Move to approve Michigan Mutual Aid Box System Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Discussion?
Just, go ahead. I think it makes sense to be a part of this mutual system. I think really much the terms have been hammered out throughout the state. And it's, when you have a large, large incident, it's the time to figure it out. It's better to figure it out beforehand. So I'm glad this is being brought to us so we can get this signed off.
How long has this been in existence, do we know?
I believe, looking at the one from Sterling Heights, they started kind of Macomb County probably in, was it 2012, I believe? In 2012, that Macomb County started to get involved in this. But I think the MABUS in general, bigger than just Macomb County,
Yeah.
started well before that, like back in 2005, somewhere in there, I believe.
No problems that we've heard of, then?
No.
Other communities gain build for things that, because we take on a liability when we?
Right, yes, certainly.
And if it happens in our jurisdiction, do we call in mutual aid under this? Or do they automatically come? Is there somebody from the county?
We have to call. So it's more of a, if there's a catastrophe of some type that happens and we know that there's a specific unit that another department has, we have to radio dispatch to.
Okay.
Using, as an example, what we have, we have a ladder truck. We're only one of a few departments that have a ladder truck, so they may call us as well.
Okay. And then would we set up a fee schedule, then?
It's all set up through this, and we also have the ability to say, no, taking the ladder truck out of the city would tax our resources we can't send.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to us whether we send something, but it's also up to us whether we request, so.
Very good. Okay? Any other discussion? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Okay, the final item, number three, is consideration of approving Good Old Days resolutions. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to review the requests from the Richmond Good Old Days Festival Committee for permission to conduct the 52nd Annual Good Old Days Festival and the special events in conjunction with this festival. This year, the Good Old Days Festival is scheduled for Thursday, September 10th, through Sunday, September 13th. Majority of the items in the festival requesting are listed in Resolution 2015-13, and most of the festival schedule and events are the same as previous years.
One of the things I noticed, for clarification, on number one, we didn't have dates on there where we had the dates on the top three. Do we act, do we need to have the dates? Because the resolution has the dates on it.
It should. In that resolution.
So that would be for the 9/13 for the grand parade and 9/12 for the children's parade?
Okay.
That should be part of the motion? Okay. Okay. Is there somebody to motion for the permission to close 19 for the grand parade and the children's parade?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-10, which directs the city clerk to submit an application on behalf of the Good Old Days Festival Committee to MDOT for permission to close M-19 on 9/12 and 9/13 of 2015 to conduct the grand parade and the children's parade in conjunction with the 52nd Annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Any audience participation? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion passes. We also need a resolution for the closure of 19 for the outhouse race on Friday. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-11, which directs the city clerk to submit an application on behalf of the Good Old Days Festival Committee to MDOT for permission to close M-19 to conduct the outhouse race on Friday, September 11th, 2015 in conjunction with the 52nd Annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Item number three would be a resolution to approve the fireworks display request. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-12, which approves the request to conduct the fireworks display on Saturday, September 12th, 2015 in conjunction with the 52nd Annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Any audience participation? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Final motion is a resolution that covers everything else during Good Old Days, basically. There's a whole list of things that are requested. I can tell you the only thing that is different in those requests, because there is something different, I will point that out to council, and that would be the staging of the grand parade. The car show has become too big, too congested, unsafe to be held at Monroe and Parker. I should say, the registration for the grand parade is where that's held, and the car show is right next to it, and it just, there's nothing we can do. We've tried everything to try to make it work better, and there's just too many people, too many cars, and everything else. So for the first time, we are moving it over to one street over, which is Park, which makes sense anyhow, because they park right up Park and then come back and park on Armada Ridge. A few cars on Parker, a few of the parade participants will be on Parker, on some of the larger parades we've had. It makes it much more safe and, otherwise, all the street closures are identical to that. It's just the fact that we would move one block north of where we're at right now. So, given that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2015-13, which approves the request from the Good Old Days Festival Committee to hang the banners, close certain streets, and the city parking lots in conjunction with the 52nd Annual Good Old Days Festival.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Is there any discussion?
You know, after 52 years, you might be getting that right, eh?
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
You've been there since the beginning, right, Counselor Schultz?
Yes, I have.
Yes, he has. He was a clown in the first one, and.
And I still am.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Yeah, but I know how you said it.
Any other discussion on this? Any audience participation on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. The Good Old Days Committee and everyone involved thanks the council for their support for the 52nd Annual Festival. Moving on, we have City Manager comments. Sir?
The audits started today, so the auditors are here, and they'll be here for the next two weeks. We are getting very close to doing a walkthrough on the police post. They actually had a cleaning crew in on the city hall side. A few things that we see that when we go through the walkthrough, there'll probably be a punch list, which is expected on a project that size. We have the Amnesty, which is the duct cleaning company that we hired before to do the encapsulation of the duct work that was kind of that fiberglass fiber board on the inside. They did the state police side before when that was vacant. They're scheduled for the first week of August for the city hall side to do the encapsulation. So we're kind of fine-tuning all those last vendors to get in there and finish the work. The curbs should've been done today, but due to the rain on Friday, they got pushed back till tomorrow. And just a reminder that the, due to a sewer tap for the new condos on Howard and Dow, Howard Street between Dow and Division will be shut down on Wednesday. We have notified the residents on Howard Street, as well as was on the Police Department's Facebook page and the city's website that went out to people who signed up for the text.
Very good. Thanks, sir. Moving on to council comments. Michael?
Just a thing on the signs, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about signage in the city and working with the chamber on that as well. Been noticing a lot, and people have asked me about it, too, is the large, what I'll call sale-flag-type advertisements or banners for flags or signs for businesses. And I don't think we have that in our ordinance, because it was a relatively new types of.
No, they're not specifically called out, although they would be part of temporary signage. And so, and that's part of what the planner and I are putting together as council requested, a phased approach, phased approach to going after the temporary signage that's proliferated around town. But that would be part of something that, like, with a grand opening, they can come in and request temporary signage would be allowed in a grand opening. But I know people have used it, and now it's just their, part of their permanent signage. And that would not be allowed as part of temporary signage.
I noticed it's pretty prevalent down in the Muttonville area.
Yeah.
But could potentially cause a visibility problem for drivers, since they're so high up and the closer they get to the road, it could be, could be a concern. That's such a busy area.
Plus, they're eye-catchers. That's the whole idea of them being able to blow around. Well, that's not what we want. We want people looking ahead today.
Right.
Especially down in that neck of the woods where it's so busy with so many cars.
Yeah, so I think we need to take a look at that.
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Just real quick. So I think, when's the final day for petitions to go with?
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Tomorrow, 4:00.
Tomorrow, 4:00?
Right. Yes.
So who's got petitions in so far?
We've had three dropped off and verified. Counselor Roberts, Counselor Green, and John Warren.
Three so far, and they have till tomorrow. Okay, sounds good.
Dennis? Dean?
Yeah, I just have a comment, John, in reference to the north end of town. The grass cutting up there, 9, 10 foot was cut. That was it.
Yeah, I know. I looked at that today. I'm having a meeting with the chief and our building clerk tomorrow at 9:30.
Okay, because I do know the adjacent property.
I saw that that was completely cut, and they cut 10 feet on one side of the sidewalk and didn't cut the, what I call the tree lawn either.
Right, right.
No, I verified a couple of different locations that we're meeting on tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and on that note, before I get to the mayor for, we've got a couple that you guys went after them. They won't comply, and you went after them to get them to comply. And now the weeds have grown so high, it's that time of year, Churchill and.
I looked at that one today. They cut it once, like right up. And then now it's right back, yep.
And then the one right here at 32 and Main, used to be the rehab place. They've got weeds that are three foot tall. It's another one that we try to get to comply, and I just don't understand.
And there's also the gray house on Division. They're mowing the yard, but not the driveway. The yard I went by, I'm like, oh, great, they're keeping it up, and then the driveway side is, you know.
I don't understand why people don't take pride in what they own.
No, we're keeping after those people, and I saw that one today.
Yeah.
They, when we initially set out the ones, the Churchill and Main got mowed right away, or Churchill and.
Parker.
Parker, I guess.
Yeah.
Got mowed right away, and then nothing since.
It's what took them, two days.
Or, yeah.
Because I watched them.
Did you?
Yeah.
Do you have a baler out there?
Yeah, I think so.
Now, the nice thing about our, is once we've gone after them, once now,
Yes.
it makes it easier the second time, because we'll just have thread mowing. Yeah.
Okay. Jim?
Okay, Mayor. It brought my attention when you set up there, 32 and Main, their flower box, their box around that tree.
Yeah.
If you notice, the bottom boards are kicking out, and they're coming out right by the sidewalk. It looks like it could be a trip hazard or, you know. And if we're going up there to tell them to cut the grass, I'd tell them to fix that, too, you know? And then we had to go after them for the sign, because that was gonna blow off.
Yeah.
You would think people would take pride, but evidently, some people, it's just, it's not in their vocabulary. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Okay, let's go to the calendar here, today being July 20th. The TIF will be meeting.
Yes.
On the 22nd at 7:00 here at City Hall. The community garage sale, and I have a flyer on it, the parts and wreck people. It's a community garage sale at the park, that's BB Park, Saturday, July 25th, from 8:30 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon. Each space is $10, and each space is approximately 10 by 20 feet. Check-in and setup will begin at 7:30 in the morning. There's definitely a limited amount of spots, so register early. And you can register at 727-3064. It says preregistration is required. I forgot to put the phone number on here. And the check-in is at the Richmond Good Old Days Barn. So Event Rain Day will be the following day on Sunday. And that is a pretty neat thing. It's been growing over the years. It started off as just a children's only, and it's grown into open, ended for everybody. So good time at BB Park this Saturday, starting at 8:30 in the morning. That moves us along to the 29th of July. The City Council will be meeting at the Richmond Cemetery at 6:15 to take a look at the setup over there. And then at 7:00, we will be meeting at the Fire Hall.
Yes.
To take a look, familiarize ourselves with the, all the trucks and equipment.
Correct.
And then immediately following the 7:00, we will have, we will pick up where we left off on our goals and objectives meeting. Now, we, did we talk about, are we having that back here, then?
I would suggest, and I guess I've checked with the chief, that after that meeting, we just stay there, up there.
You guys got AC up there?
Yeah.
Good. It's like today, we won't be there very long.
I mean, rather than, it's just, you know, by the time you go from there to here, it'll be another 15 minutes.
Do we need to post the 6:15 at cemetery?
We will post that here.
Okay, okay.
One thing, when we first set up that meeting, it was 7:00 at the Fire Hall. Normally, the special meeting's at 7:00. We don't do food. Now, we're meeting at 6:15, is just some snacks, like a bag of chips and some cookies, or so. Is that enough, or?
I don't know that we even need it at 6:15, do we? Now, we'll meet at the cemetery. We're gonna meet at cemetery, open and close.
Meet at the cemetery, let's say, near the chapel.
Okay, 6:15. Okay, very good. And then we'll close that meeting, reopen the meeting at the Fire Hall at 7:00.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Okay. And then on the 30th, Thursday, Senior Helpers, I have another flyer here, who sponsored the New Horizon Band on June 25th, will be sponsoring the Sentimental Journey Band. I've heard them, they're very entertaining. That will be on July 30th at 7:00 in the BB Street Park. And more than likely, it will be under the pavilion.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and that's free. Senior Helpers, business here on North. Senior Helpers, uh, business here on North Main Street sponsors that.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, they provide food, they have like hot dogs and everything.
They have the hot dogs and everything?
And, yep.
Well, there you go.
Hot dogs and ice cream last time, I believe.
There you go. I know, I know John will be there, free hot dogs. Probably, after party department's gonna be there.
Yeah.
Okay, that moves us on to August already. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be August 3rd. Again, uh, summer hours for the city council, uh, the meeting will start at six, right here at City Hall. Um, I don't believe there's anything else that we need to announce off of the city's calendar. Is there anything else we need to bring up on the calendar? I don't think there is. Okay, moving on. Um, we have a, uh, closed session this evening and we are going to have two motions to go in closed session due to the fact that we have two items that, uh, fall under the closed, or the Michigan Open Meetings Act. So I'll entertain a motion for, um, a closed session for the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters. Is there a motion?
Move to convene in a closed session in accordance with Section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended for strategy negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement of either negotiating party requesting a closed hearing. Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. Roll call, please.
LaFour?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Yarick?
Yes.
And Green is absent.
Motion passes. We also need a motion to, uh, stay in closed session then for the city manager's evaluation. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended for purposes of considering a periodic personal evaluation of the city manager as requested by the city manager.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Technically, we don't have to come back and reconvene and then go back in again.
No, we can...
One time?
We need one motion, we'll stay in closed session for both and then come back in and reconvene.
Okay, I thought so, I just saw we had, you know, two different things.
Yeah, when you, you do need to be specific on why you're going to closed session, so you needed both motions to pass, but, yeah, we can stay in there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by, oh, I'm sorry, roll call, yeah, roll call.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Yarick?
Yes.
Green is absent, LaFour?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break before we go in. Um, can we have a motion to reconvene into open session?
Make a motion to reconvene in open session?
Support.[1613.52]